We're starting. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mark Gisalvo. I am serve as the elected town moderator. Welcome to annual town meeting of the town of North Andover, first established in sixteen forty-six. I call to order the twenty twenty-one session of annual town meeting. Thank you for attending this beautiful evening and respecting those of our neighbors that are apprehensive about large gatherings, who are now able to participate in town meeting. I appreciate it a great deal. We start with a memory. Two of our colleagues with whom I've shared significant time on this stage in past decades have passed away this past year. Former selectman Ken Crouch and former selectman Jack Graham. I ask you to remember them. Among the more than six hundred thousand Americans who died of COVID-nineteen were eighty-nine of our neighbors here in North Andover. Many more we know died indirectly. We remember them and grieve with their families. Displayed here in front of me are eighty-nine roses, one for each of those lost souls for which we lament. At the conclusion of the meeting, if you've lost a loved one and wish to memorialize them, I invite you to come up at the conclusion of the evening and take a rose. And we want to particularly thank Dawn Pease from Dawn SciTech for donating the flowers. You'll also see directly in front of me a single white rose. It is a very special remembrance for my predecessor, Charlie Salisbury, who was moderator for more than two decades, standing at this podium, serving as a member of the Board of Selectmen at the time, and for a lifetime of civic involvement. And we should particularly remember and appreciate his service. I pray he gives us all grace, albeit from afar, just as he did with wit and wisdom throughout the decades that he stood at this podium. Please share a moment of silence for Charlie, and all we wish to thank with a remembrance who are not with us today. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The past year has been one of disease balanced by miracle vaccination, racial discord followed by civic protests and jury findings of guilt, insurrection, and then inauguration, and the pain of distance from our loved ones that we can now see and thankfully hug. Know we are a strong community, and this is the anniversary of our town, our three-hundred-and-seventy-fifth year. Its storied history has seen revolution, civil war, two-world wars, multiple pandemics, and many other challenges. And we will square away and succeed in any challenge that might be small in front of us right now in comparison to what I've just related. Each year I try to highlight a contributing member of our community in the stitch in the fabric of our community, a person or group deserving of a moment of respect and applause. And given in this our anniversary year that we ought to recognize that all of us were immigrants but for the indigenous people who lived on the shores of Lake Chickwick. Seventy years ago, I had the pleasure of recruiting and appointing a German national as a member of our finance committee. He was a resident, but not a citizen. And that person has been helping, volunteering for years now, making recommendations to this group and working on behalf of all of us in this community, despite not having the privilege of being able to vote on what's been recommended. I'm pleased to let you know that this past year, Thomas Ringler, has become a naturalized citizen and proudly sits among us on the stage and has earned that title of citizen like no other. For those of you who are able to stand, I please invite you to do so and join Thomas in leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Thomas. By show of your voting cards, how many of you have been to town meeting in the past? Ah, seems like all of us. That's wonderful. So in the interest of brevity, you know that we have a track meet going on right now. I don't want to add this event as a marathon to that track meet. So I'll dispense with most of my usual niceties and introductions. But I will review just a few things. Number one, you can see because of the daylight, there are no visual displays. But you've all been handed all of the presentations that were given to me at, under the rules, at that moment in time, and you can follow along. And for those of you with mobile devices or laptops, you can follow what will be on our broadcast and live stream as well, which will show all of the presentations. So you know, I have also sworn an affidavit that I have no conflict on any of the matters before us this evening and have taken no public position on any of the matters before us and can perform my duties wholly, fairly, and impartially. And I will continue my practice of not voting other than to make or break a tie vote. Please remember, we come together in good faith to make judgments for our entire community. Sitting here, US citizens have been magically transformed into legislators, and we need to act that way. We leave cynicism and bad faith behind, knowing that the magnitude of our collective efforts have an influence on the thirty thousand people who live in our community. So I thank you in advance for choosing to respectfully participate in local democracy. I now recognize the Chair of the Select Board, Chris Nobley.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Nobley, three seventeen Hillside Road, Chair of the Select Board. I move that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and with the reading of the constable's return of service of that warrant. I further move that the moderator not be required to read articles of the warrant verbatim, but be allowed to refer to articles by number and by subject matter. And further, that any motion or amendments need not be read, but are to be voted upon as shown, published, or otherwise provided in print to the voters in attendance.
So the motion is made. Do I hear a second? Please, majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, I declare it a unanimous vote. Ladies and gentlemen, as in the past, we group articles called consent articles. Those are non-controversial, typical workaday things that we need to do as statutory obligation in order to actually conduct this town meeting and run our town. This year, we have consent articles one, two, three, and four that are grouped because of their likeness. We can dispatch with them with a single vote if it's unanimous. Do I hear objection? So if we could have a motion, please?
Move to adopt Articles one, two, three, and four as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your card. Those opposed, I declare it a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. We'll go now to our second group of consent articles. Those are Articles six, seven, and eight, which you see in your book. Do I hear objection to them being considered as consent articles? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman.
Move to adopt Articles six, seven, and eight as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made. Do I hear a second? I hear a second. All those in favor, please raise your card. Those opposed, I see no opposition. A unanimous vote, I declare. The third group of consent articles are sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six. May I have a motion?
I move to adopt Articles sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made. Do I hear a second? And seconded, thank you very much. All those in favor of the article and motion, please raise your card. Those opposed, please raise your card. Seeing none, I declare it as well a unanimous vote. We have our final group of consent articles, Articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt Articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor of the consent article, please raise your hand and your card, excuse me. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card. I declare it to a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, sir. Have you checked in, sir? You need to go check in. Yes, you need to get a card. Leave your stuff there. We'll watch it. Don't worry about it. No, not a disturbance at all. Thanks for clearing that up. Everybody needs to be banded and have a card, or you can't vote. We're now on Article thirteen. I'm sorry, Article twenty-four. I apologize. Article twenty-four, I am told, will be withdrawn. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to withdraw Article twenty-four.
Is there a second to the motion? Thank you. Is there objection? I hear none. Please raise your card to withdraw. And if you are not in favor of withdrawal, raise your card now. I declare that as well a unanimous vote. Now we're to our first substantive article. We're on Article thirteen. Before we can move forward, we have several presentations for the next group of articles, and that is the financial articles in our community. And I'd like to hear a motion from the Chair of the Finance Committee. Excuse me, thirteen.
I move to adopt Article thirteen as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made and seconded. Our town manager, Melissa Rodriguez, is going to be giving us a five-minute presentation. Would you please put five minutes on the clock?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is the Town's Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. A capital improvement plan identifies the capital items, which are typically defined as our tangible assets, our projects that cost more than twenty-five thousand dollars and have a minimum life of five years. It provides us with a planning schedule and defines our financing options. As a policy, the town funds projects of less than fifty thousand dollars within the operating budget. This capital budget is the upcoming year's fiscal year twenty-two spending plan for capital items, which are being presented to you for approval. We have eighteen projects in nine departments for a total of five million sixty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. The capital projects include projects from within all different departments, from IT to roadway improvements to an engine truck to the middle school performance center floor replacement. This year, we are recommending free cash as a funding source at four million forty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars will be a grant from the state at chapter ninety, and two hundred thousand dollars are being funded by CPC applications, which we will see later in this meeting. We are advising against using debt this year. We have a policy of keeping debt at or below five percent of the total operating budget. With this plan in place, not using debt, our debt percentage would be four-point-one-seven. In fiscal year twenty-two, we have six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in debt falling off. And by using free cash to fund our capital budget again this year, an additional four hundred thousand dollars will be freed up in fiscal year twenty-three. This leaves us capacity within the levy for a new one-million-dollar debt payment in fiscal year twenty-four, which could fund large capital projects that are being contemplated in Facilities Master Plan Two. To give you an idea of what a one-million-dollar debt payment would pay for, it's about ten-million-dollar project. We also have a water capital improvement plan. We plan on spending only fifty thousand dollars in year, this year, and we are funding that out of retained earnings. The current balance in retained earnings is four-point-eight million dollars. For our sewer capital improvement plan, we have seven-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars worth of projects. We plan to use retained earnings for that as well. So just so you know, retained earnings is like the free cash of the savings account for our sewer capital improvement. And our balance there is four-point-nine million dollars. And I'd be remiss not to tell you what our free cash is as we're starting the night. So we are starting free cash at ten million eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Now there's time for questions. Does anybody have a query about this article? Please come to the microphone. For the benefit of those, when you come to the microphone, I ask you to identify yourself and your address. Welcome, Bob.
Sure.
You'll excuse me. The question is not germane to the specific capital, excuse me, the capital improvement plan. I will allow it at the moment, but when you get up and speak, we are to speak only about the article that's in front of us. But it's entirely appropriate, and I would expect that it would come up later. So if you don't mind, Madam Town Manager. Thank you for the clarification, Sarah.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So we have considered the different funding sources, and it is fabulous that the funding, the rates are so low. As a triple-A bonded community, our interest rates typically do stay rather low. So it's not as important or relevant for us to move forward quickly when taking debt. We have an extraordinary amount of free cash right now due to the Columbia gas accounts being closed out, due to the planning board permit for Amazon, and several other kind of unique situations that we faced in the last few years. Our free cash is really more than we would want it to be typically. In addition to that, we know that because of the Amazon permit fee, our free cash will be replenished for next year. So we feel that it is more advantageous to the town to keep our debt capacity for the future and use it for Facilities Master Plan Two, which includes many of the school buildings and will be a large expenditure.
Thank you. Are there any other queries? Hearing none, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you very much. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your card. I declare it a majority vote. Thank you. Now we're moving to Article seventeen. This is where you all collectively get to spend a hundred million dollars, or actually a bit more than a hundred million bucks. So I hope you feel wealthy for the moment. And I need a motion.
I move to adopt Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made and seconded. We will hear an up-to-fifteen-minute presentation, I pray that it's a bit less, from our town manager and the superintendent of schools, and then later from the Chair of the FinCom. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am presenting the fiscal year twenty-two Town Manager's Recommended Budget. The town is presenting a balanced budget within capacity as determined by our forecasting exercises and additional information we have learned since then. This includes the consideration of the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Costs Committee. It is a hundred-and-twelve-million-dollar budget. It includes transfers to stabilization and funding of capital using the free cash as we just did. It is a comprehensive number. As you will remember, and I will tell you as we go through, we are seeing some different types of growth this year and also some hindrances on our growth. And our budget is only able to increase as a whole by two-point-three percent. Property taxes make up approximately seventy-four percent of our budget. And if you're following along, this is page twenty-three of the packet. The revenues for the fiscal year twenty-two budget total a hundred-and-eight million two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand two-hundred-and-twelve dollars, again, a two-point-three-five percent increase from the last fiscal year. Obviously, this is not including any of those free cash transfers. Our property taxes are estimated to grow by three-point-six-one percent, about two-point-nine million dollars. And for the first time, I remember, since around the two thousand seven, two thousand eight period, we're seeing local receipts decreasing by three-point-five-five percent, approximately four-hundred thousand dollars. Things that you wouldn't think of that were affected, we all think of mail tax, but we didn't have any passport income this year. Things like that were really a challenge, and so we are seeing those local receipts down. Local aid is level-funded, except for a small increase in unrestricted aid. Our new growth, that two-point-nine-million-dollar number, that's made up of proposition two and a half, plus eight-hundred thousand dollars in new growth, which is more than we typically do see. Our budget this year is one-hundred-and-twelve million eight-hundred-and-seventeen thousand two-hundred-and-one dollars. Our total appropriation will be less than a one percent increase from last year due to increased spending in reserves and capital. This chart shows, and it's on page twenty-six of your packet, a breakdown of our twenty-twenty-two expenses. You can see that education makes up about forty-nine percent of the chart. We actually know it's a lot more than that. It's probably more like seventy percent because we also have support services and many shared costs that we share together. The FY twenty-two budget, which includes again a two-point-three-five percent increase, sees an increase in municipal departments of point-six percent, a decrease in support services of three-point-four-three percent, and an increase in the education budget of two-point-five percent, which was level service. The municipal budget is increasing by a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. The school budget is increasing by one million five-hundred thousand dollars. And our support budget is decreasing by sixty-six thousand one-hundred-and-nine dollars. As you know, the town joined the Group Insurance Commission in twenty-fourteen. At that time, our town was self-insured and appropriating approximately eleven million dollars for health insurance. In fiscal year twenty-two, eight years later, the recommended health insurance budget is eleven million three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. Health insurance breakdown roughly has about half school employees and for the remaining half, three million dollars for retirees and two million dollars for town employees. Within the health insurance is expected six percent increase for health insurance costs. Town staff is decreasing this year. We're going from two-hundred-and-eleven-point-nine-seven employees in fiscal year twenty-one to two-hundred-and-ten-point-seven-seven. And if you remember, last year, I was very excited about all the highlights and the changes and all the good things we were going to do. This year, it's really more of a routine budget sadly, with some decreases. But I think that we should all be really proud of the fact that we've got through COVID together and managed to keep our budget in whole. We've moved postage to one budget for efficiency purposes. For the second year in a row, we funded the Finance Committee Reserve at one-point-five million dollars for emergencies. We had an employee reduction of point-two in the Community Development Office and one in the Town Clerk's office. We moved our fabulous Community Support Coordinator to the Police Department. We created salary reserves for our unsettled collective bargaining agreements, and our COOLAs are at one-point-five percent. I'm going to go ahead and skip slide thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three because we voted on those during the consent calendar, as well as thirty-four, and I'm going to hand things over to Superintendent Gilligan.
Thank you, Melissa. I want to say, start by saying how honored I am to be the superintendent of the North Andover Public Schools. And I'm thankful for everyone's support this year during a really difficult year with COVID. But I'm especially thankful and grateful to work so closely with a terrific town manager. It's been terrific working together on a weekly basis. Our budget tonight, that you see, focuses on our strategic objectives of supporting all students, hiring and retaining a strong faculty and staff, providing a consistent and rigorous curriculum, and the much-needed COVID-related additional academic, social, emotional support for all students. It also continues our practice of strong collaboration with the town. So for this year's operating budget, we are at two-point-five percent, and that provides for level services. And it's consistent with the Town Manager's recommendation for the schools. It identifies COVID-related expenses for FY twenty-two that will be funded as one-time expenses. And it adjusts our five-year plan, which we put out last year, to a seven-year plan to account for the impact of the pandemic and to coincide with school building projects that will be part of the Facilities Master Plan Phase Two. In closing, this budget continues to address our greatest needs, such as the schedule change at North Andover High School. It provides additional time and support for unfinished learning while remaining fiscally responsible. I look forward to continuing this process of addressing our greatest needs as part of a larger thoughtful plan for many years to come. In my opinion, our children, our town deserve nothing less, and I thank you for your continued support.
That was very efficiently done. Thank you very much. Our next presentation, up to five minutes, will be by the Chair of our FinCom, Sasha Weinrich. While Sasha's getting set, let me just give some appreciation out to former Select Board Member Phil DeColigero and School Committee Member David Teresi, who chose not to run for reelection. We thank them for their service to our community. And as well, welcome new Select Board Member Janice Phillips and new School Committee Member Pam Petrowski. Welcome to the stage. Thank you, Sasha.
How's everyone tonight? Some energy? You're not asleep? All right.
All right. So my name is Sasha Weinrich, and I am the current Chairwoman of the Finance Committee. I'll be speaking to you briefly tonight about the proposed FY twenty-two budget and how the Finance Committee approached the budgeting process this year, as well as some of the unique circumstances we encountered that you'll see on tonight's warrant. And we've actually voted already on some of them. So let's start with explaining who the Finance Committee is and what our typical budget process looks like. First, the Finance Committee is a nine-member board appointed by the town moderator to learn about, explain, and make recommendations on all aspects of municipal finance on behalf of the town's residents. Typically, the budget process for us begins with the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee, which includes two Finance Committee members, and then we make revenue recommendations to the town manager. After those recommendations are made, the town manager and school department work collaboratively with their departments to create their proposed budgets, and they present them to their respective elective boards, so the Select Board and the School Committee, and they also present them to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee then meets with various stakeholders until we're confident that enough, we have enough information to provide a recommendation at town meeting. Having some trouble with these slides. All right. So this year, the proposed FY twenty-two budget is a hundred and twelve point eight million dollars, with a breakdown of revenues and expenses shown in your slides packet on page fifteen. Overall, the Finance Committee believes the budget is allocated properly and provided both the municipality and the school department the appropriate amount of funds to be successful in FY twenty-two based on the revenue available. That being said, as the town manager already explained, the revenue is lower than in traditional years due to COVID-19 impacts on revenue sources, which resulted in a reduced services budget for the municipality and a level services education budget. North Andover was fortunate enough, however, to be somewhat insulated from these impacts due to the composition of our revenue sources, which allowed us to avoid budget cuts. The Finance Committee believes that the budget was prepared appropriately for our current revenue projections and voted to recommend favorable action regarding the FY twenty-two operating budget, capital improvement plan, and enterprise fund budgets. Moving on to slide nineteen in your packet, I want to take a moment to recognize North Andover's current financial position and how we got here. Over the last several years, our town administrators and boards have worked hard to maintain sound fiscal stewardship of our community, which has allowed us to maintain our AAA bond rating, keep our debt ratio under five percent, and build up free cash and reserves. Actually, as the town manager explained, the proposed FY twenty-two capital improvement plan is predominantly funded by free cash. And we're gonna still maintain a healthy balance of free cash after transfers, including after an extraordinary transfer of two point seven million dollars, which I'll discuss on the next slide. So by practicing this prudent financial planning for several years, we've been preparing our rainy day fund for future issues, which is really serving us well now. Article twenty-five that we voted on in tonight's warrant is proposing an appropriation of two point seven million dollars of free cash to the FY twenty-two general fund to cover additional resources for our community, predominantly to assist in COVID-related learning loss. We're able to use a one-time transfer from free cash to the general fund to cover these expenses. It is appropriate to use free cash for this need because these costs are not recurring. COVID-related learning loss needs should not be funded as part of the operating budget as our current revenue sources do not support that significantly higher level of funding in perpetuity and would create a structural deficit within our budget. We also know that free cash is being replenished with a building permit from the future Amazon development, which the town manager already discussed, and there has been additional federal guidance released that North Andover should expect approximately nine million dollars in federal aid to fund COVID-related costs. This federal funding may also be used instead of free cash, but this has yet to be determined. Lastly, looking forward, the Finance Committee would be remiss not to mention the needs of the North Andover Public Schools are substantial. Recurring revenue sources fall vastly short of meeting the projected needs of our schools. The School Committee has currently authorized a School Building Capacity Subcommittee to evaluate the space needs in the district that will be incorporated into Facilities Master Plan Two. The School Administration has also presented a seven-year operating plan that estimates the cost of operations of these larger spaces, as well as additional staffing and curriculum needs. The Finance Committee anticipates that to meet the presented future facility and operational needs of the school, the town will require significant new growth, a tax override, a debt exclusion, or the combination of all three. The Finance Committee looks forward to continued discussions regarding these plans over the coming years, and urges residents to participate in these discussions as they will help shape the financial future of our community. Thank you.
Well, folks, this is a time for you now. Do we have any queries about our town budget? Somebody's coming up, and as we do that, I'd like to first thank my Finance Committee and say a particular appreciation for the consequential role of the Finance Committee, and thank the former Chair, Tim Sheerhart, and members Divya Bhattanagar and Chuck Trafton, who served for prior years. And joining us and welcoming as new members for the first time are Regina Keen, Gentleman O'Connell, and Dustin Silk. Thank you very much for all of your work. Sir.
Mr. Moderator, Ted Tripp, two sixty-two Boston Street.
Welcome, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the federal government passed the COVID-19 Relief Act, and I believe something like one point nine billion dollars is coming to Massachusetts, and something like one point six billion of that is supposed to go directly to the town and city school districts. And I don't know if it's been a portion yet, this is over a two-year period, if it's been a portion, or how much goes to each town or to each city, and I wonder if that's been factored into the budget.
Let's see if we can get you an answer. Anybody wish to?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. The town of North Andover does anticipate to receive nine point three million dollars from that federal funds. It is supposed to last for a five-year period, and it's rather restrictive in how we can spend it. It falls into five basic buckets, and we haven't actually received anything yet, although we have applied for it. It can support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, be used for water and sewer infrastructure projects, be used to address negative economic impacts, be used to pay for premium pay for essential workers, or be used for broadband infrastructure projects. The town will go to that nine million dollars first and use that rather than any town funds to fund any COVID-related expenses that we have in fiscal year twenty-two.
But I believe there's a section of that bill that goes...
Excuse me, sir. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Please do it through the moderator, go ahead.
I believe there's a section of that bill that goes, the money goes directly to the school district to alleviate any educational problems because of COVID-19 during the previous year, and it's over a two-year period, so I would think it would affect the school budget, not necessarily the town budget.
Let's see if we can get some clarity there. Thank you for your query. Do we, anybody, please? While Dr. Gilligan comes up to the stage, I'd like also to introduce our new town clerk and North Andover resident, Dawn Warren, who was assistant in organizing this meeting, in addition to which her outstanding staff, Suzanne Pellet and Patty Sifflin. Dr. Gilligan.
Ted, so in the future, there will be money called Essar Money, Essar Two and Essar Three coming up, that North Andover is slated to receive, and it's to help impact the most disproportionately impacted students in special education EL, and that money will be coming forward in the future, and it will be able to assist in making a difference for unfinished learning in additional ways as well.
So is it in the current budget or not?
Sir, sir, sir. This is not a colloquy. If you have a follow-up question, do it through the moderator.
Okay, well, I still wanna know if it's factored in the current budget, or is it gonna be additional money on top of what we're voting on right now tonight?
The Essar money is not in this budget at this time. It will be going forward, the Essar Two.
Thank you very much, sir. Another query? Oop, be careful.
Yes, hi, Matt Willis, one hundred Longwood Avenue.
Welcome, Mr. Willis.
Yep, thank you. So I just wanted to put out there where it talks about the needs of the North Andover Public Schools as outlined in various public meetings by the School Administration and School Committee are substantial.
Let me ask you to come a little closer to the microphone.
Yeah, and are substantial for the school costs, and... Was any thought about that statement addressing the proposed developments that are kinda going on or planning to go on in North Andover?
If I might help, are you asking if future revenue has been expected and put into the budget?
Yeah.
Let me ask either of our two budget writers here.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Whether or not future non-approved building items and other potential revenues have been factored into the revenue side of the budget.
Mr. Moderator, when we, through you, we do a five-year forecast each year, and what we do is we look at the revenue that we know is coming forward. So typically, we do not add that revenue on until we have a building permit in hand. We don't wanna be spending money we don't have yet, obviously, but we do look at those as we're creating that five-year forecast.
Okay. Is there a follow-up?
Well, I'm most concerned about the proposal that's on one fourteen, and I know that's a totally different subject.
Sir, if you can tie it to the budget, I'll allow you to speak.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to end there.
There are going to be a lot of expenses to the schools for those proposals, and they're not included in the...
I'm sorry, that's not germane to our budget conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, though, I appreciate it. Do we have any other queries? Hearing none, I think we're ready to spend a hundred, raise and spend a hundred and seven million dollars. All those in favor of the motion as made, please raise your card. You may put them down, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. I declare it a majority vote, supermajority vote, thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item, which is Article, we're going backwards, fourteen. And we're going to hear from the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Mr. Moderator, move to adopt Article fourteen as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made, is there a second? I hear a second, please go forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brian Roach, I live at two hundred Coachman's Lane, and I currently serve as the Chair of the North Andover Community Preservation Committee. If I may, Mr. Moderator, this year marks the twentieth anniversary since town meeting adopted the Community Preservation Act.
You'll excuse me one moment, my fault. For the timekeeper, I've allowed the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee up to five minutes for the presentation of that committee, so if you could restart, thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I'll try not to use it all.
That would be appreciated by all of us.
This year marks the twentieth anniversary since town meeting adopted the Community Preservation Act. We were the second community in the Commonwealth to do so and the first to appropriate funds for a project. The CPA's impact over the last twenty years can be seen throughout North Andover in hundreds of acres of protected open space, preservation efforts of historic resources such as the Stevens Estate, investments made and improvements in expansion of affordable housing stock, and the creation and improvement of dozens of recreation areas. The taxpayers of North Andover should be proud of the investments made in the last twenty years through CPA. More information on CPA history and this year's proposed funding can be found in your meeting packet and on the town's website. For FY twenty-two, the CPC is recommending nine project applications for funding totaling just over two point three million dollars. These projects touch on each of the core pillars of the Community Preservation Act, which are affordable housing, historic preservation, and support for open space and recreation. This year's projects include twenty-one thousand dollars in supplemental funding for the preservation of the Bradstreet School Memorial, which was initially funded in twenty-fourteen, thirty thousand nine hundred for initial survey work on Phase One of the proposed North Andover Rail Trail, eighty thousand dollars for funding for a consultant to help the town better plan for its affordable housing needs and goals, one hundred thousand dollars for the Affordable Housing Trust, two hundred thousand dollars for the final phase of the Playground Master Plan for Playgrounds at the Thompson and Bradstreet Education Center, three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for a major renovation to the primary entry point to Wire Hill, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the North Andover Housing Authority to fund capital improvements consistent with the recently submitted needs assessment, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred dollars for the restoration of the Second Burial Ground on Academy Road, and six hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for the ninth phase of the Ridgewood Cemetery Historic Master Plan, and finally fifty thousand dollars for administrative expenses. The committee feels that each of these projects are consistent with the goals of the CPA and continue to enhance the character and sense of community we all experience as North Andover residents. Thank you for your time, Mr. Ration.
Thank you so much. Do we have any queries for Mr. Roach, or on the Community Preservation Fund? Please. Let me also highlight another person on the stage while the gentleman comes up. I wanna thank Chris McClure, who used to be our town's IT Director, who's left to become Chief Information Officer in the Town of Waterton, and his replacement is John Highland, who I've worked with quite closely, and he's thrown right into the fire. And probably has the most difficult job at town meeting here today. Sir.
Larry Allen, three Belmont Street.
Welcome, sir.
I question the amount spent on the cemetery, which Phase Nine is described as six hundred thousand, and really listed as one point one million.
Thank you very much, sir.
Sure, I think clarify that, Mr. Moderator, through you. Ridgewood Cemetery Association actually submitted one application for two projects. So Ridgewood Cemetery Association is handling both their ninth phase of the Historic Master Plan, but they're also taking over the renovation of the Second Burial Ground. They're actually been transferred custody of that, they've done such an amazing job with Ridgewood, they're the pros to handle this, so we're supporting that effort.
That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
Anyways, I question it.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I think we'll move forward, we're ready for a vote, it appears. I like everyone wanting to move to action. All those in favor of the motion as made, please raise your card. You may put them down. All those opposed, I declare it, I'm sorry, I don't declare it a unanimous vote, I declare it a supermajority vote. We'll move now to Article fifteen, and we have a motion from the Chair of the Finance Committee.
I move to adopt Article fifteen as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. All those opposed, raise your card. I declare it a supermajority vote, and I thank you for the twenty-three cents an hour that I'm being paid. I hope I'm worth every penny of it. We'll move now to Article five, and we have a motion from the Chair of the Board of Select.
Mr. Moderator, move to adopt Article five as printed in the presentation packet.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, do we have any questions about the article, or do you wish to say anything, Mr. Chair? No need, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, all Article five is doing is recreating an option for residents to give a donation to veterans on their tax bill, completely optional. It came forward from our Veterans Director, Joel LeBlanc.
Thank you for the clarity of that. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your card. You may put them down, thank you. All those opposed, a supermajority vote, thank you very, very much. We're now up to Article nine, going backwards and forwards a bit, and the motion, do I hear a motion, please?
Move to adopt Article nine as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made. And seconded, thank you very much. We're gonna have a up-to-five-minute presentation by the town manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This presentation is on page forty-two of your packet. It's Article nine, Transfer the Care and Custody of Land to the Conservation Commission. In this article, we are trying to create a conservation restriction. For those of you that don't know, that is a binding agreement that's placed on a property forever to permanently protect, preserve, and conserve it for open space and natural resources. That legally binding covenant is recorded at...
That legally binding covenant is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The owner, in this case will be the town, continues to own the land and use it as permitted by the terms in the conservation restriction. The restriction is typically granted to a third party, usually a nonprofit charitable organization, and they act as the steward of the land and ensure the property remains open space. These agreements are approved by the state. We protect the property for conservation purposes, for the protection and management of natural resources, and for the protection of the watershed resources of the town. In this article, we are trying to protect the land around the Stevens Estate. The map is on page 44 of your presentation. Area A is 137 acres of land surrounding the estate. The 16 acres of land that is marked as Area B contains the buildings. They are not included because the buildings are already protected by a historical preservation restriction, which is recommended by the state for a restriction of this kind. So to be clear, it's all protected, Area A, the land will be a conservation restriction, Area B is already protected by the historical preservation. Pending tonight's vote to permanently protect the lands, we will transfer the care and custody of it to the Conservation Commission, and the Commission will work on language for a conservation restriction to be stewarded by Mass Audubon. Fireside Catering, which we signed a contract with back in May, will also have some responsibility to make certain that Mass Audubon is acting as responsible stewards, and will have extensive reporting requirements. At this time, we have been negotiating a management agreement with Mass Audubon, it's still waiting to be signed and going to going final review, but we're very excited to welcome them to the town. Within that management agreement, we set out the responsibilities for the property, including working with the Conservation Commission to determine the conditions now and how we continue to protect that land for us all to enjoy. The Friends of the North Andover Trails will remain involved in the project, which we're all very excited about and thankful to them for the amount of work they currently do there, and the public access will remain. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're very welcome. Do we have any queries about the article? Somebody is coming up, and while they do, I'm going to first say thank you as well. Excuse me, sir, there's somebody coming up first, and you'll be welcome. I want to say thank you to our citizen advocates, you'll see them on the front page of the book, most particularly Attorney John Fooey, who will be available to assist citizens at the meeting, and secondly, if I fall over, he will step in as Deputy Moderator, and most importantly, the remote question team, Heather McNeil and Max Butterbrot, who are doing so, and I invite those people who might have questions, unlike most of the people in this room who happen to be unable to attend, they can do so at northandoverma.gov or text to 978-237-4862. Sir.
Gerald Brecker, 488 Pleasant Street.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to say that it comes as a bit of surprise that the town has executed a contract only a few weeks ago with a private party to operate the Stevens Estate. As I recall, this meeting, not all that long ago, went through extensive debate over this very issue, so my question, Mr. Moderator, for whoever the proper authority is, is by what authority did the town go ahead and sign this contract, which may be a perfectly fine contract for all I know, but by what authority was this contract signed and not brought before Town Meeting, whereas all previous efforts to do the same thing were brought before Town Meeting?
Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to address that.
Okay, it's a little bit far afield, but it's at least about the same subject.
It's not far afield at all, Mr. Moderator.
Excuse me, sir.
It's not far afield at all.
Excuse me, sir.
It's not...
Excuse me.
Do you want to have a, shall we have a vote on this?
You will stop.
Shall we have a vote on this?
There is no vote to be had.
How about a point of order?
Would you please shut the gentleman's microphone? Excuse me. The question is a little bit afield, however, however, because it is about the subject, sir, you're coming dangerously close. However, I will allow the question to be forwarded, and the Town Manager has offered to provide an answer, please.
Sure, Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to answer the question. So in the past, it has come before Town Meeting because we were trying to lease or sell the land. In this instance, we entered into an agreement with the company to manage the property. We are not giving up any of our custody or rights, and so that does not need to come before Town Meeting.
Mr. Brecker. Are you satisfied, sir?
I'm satisfied with the answer.
Good.
Whether I agree with it or not, but I'm not satisfied by as you do, the way you conduct this meeting.
That is your prerogative, sir. Sir?
Andrew Rayner, 11A Concord Street, welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, please excuse my ignorance in this, I'm not well-read in all of these topics, I did read the warrant, though. My question is, is that this TEC organization, this is not the trustees of reservations, is it?
It is not, but people...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, is this the...
Quite right.
I forgot what the...
Thank you very much, sir. One question?
No, it is not. The TEC organization that you see on the plan was actually who developed the plan for us, they're an engineering firm.
Okay.
The conservation restriction will be held by Mass Audubon.
Okay, I don't even know them, but my next question is, would it be better to put this in the hands of the trustees of reservations? Is it the same thing, or is it different, or...
I'll allow the question.
So they are both two different land steward organizations. They have, Fireside has determined that they would like to move forward with Mass Audubon. We are very excited to be working with Mass Audubon. I will say that the meeting I've had with them thus far was probably the most pleasant meeting since COVID. They were so excited to be a part of this community and take on this property, and we're really excited to welcome them.
Okay, I was just wondering what the answer to that question was, and I trust your judgment, and I thank the...
Thank you, sir.
Board of Selectmen, I mean, the Select Board.
Thank you very much. Do we have, yes, sir.
Michael List, 30 Leon Drive. To follow up on that previous question, my experience with trustees of reservation is that they often provide, they often require fees for access to the land, will something like that be required in this case?
All access will remain free, except if you're doing some kind of special program. For instance, if they offered a camp, or if they were doing a foraging program, there may be a small fee, but public access will remain and will be free.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we have another query? Take your time, don't worry about it.
Mary Roth, 210 Chickering Road, and you may have completely answered this, but I'm confused because I live across the street, and very often, there's a gate up on the entrance. Is there going to be another entrance that won't be gated for other people? Not a chain, there's a chain across the parking lot you can't enter, it's there like 50% of the time.
Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to answer. From dawn to dusk, the property will be accessible. There will also be 10 parking spots reserved for residents, in case there was an event going on, you want to make sure residents are always able to park and enjoy it. So it will be open from dawn to dusk.
Okay, is it supposed to be open from dawn to dusk now?
I don't know that there's any, I don't want to, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know the particulars of when it's open now, but it will be open from dawn to dusk under this protection.
Okay, will there be any access to...
Excuse me, ma'am, through me.
Sorry.
Quite right.
Will there be any access to the property in addition to the Chickering Road driveway? Confusing.
Stevens College. Makes me think Stevens College. I've been thinking about the Stevens College as opposed to...
Oh, I apologize. Ma'am, you're talking about an entirely different matter. You're talking about the Stevens Coolidge Estate and not the Stevens up on the hill here.
I just moved here, I apologize.
Quite right, no worries. So, however...
I'll go away now.
No, 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 don't go away. However, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, if you write to him, will be very happy to answer that question for you, okay?
I'm new.
No, don't worry about it, welcome.
Tough act to follow there, but David Brown, 35 Old Farm Road.
Welcome, sir.
And also the Chairman of the Trustees of Osgood Hill. Just a quick question on the slide, it says we've negotiated the management agreement with Mass Audubon, set out responsibilities for the property, and we plan to continue to work with F-O-N-A-T. What is that?
May I, Mr. Moderator?
Please.
I forget that everyone doesn't speak my municipal nerd language, I apologize. That is the Friends of the North Andover Trails.
Ah, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Do we have any other questions? Hearing none, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. I see a supermajority, it is clearly a two-thirds vote, which is required. Thank you very much for your participation. We're now going to move to Article 10, which is a citizen's petition. Do we have somebody who's willing to make a motion? I'm sorry? Would you please stand? Oh, I'm sorry, motion is made, is there a second? Now, do we have anybody to speak on behalf of the motion? Mr. Cuffey? Please come forward, he's very far back. So this gives me the opportunity to thank a few more people, and one person that I really hope you'll join me in appreciating is after decades of service, the retirement of our Fire Chief, Bill McCarthy. Thank you for your stewardship, Bill. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Should I move?
Please speak more loudly and into the microphone.
I move the article as printed in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded already, somebody did you the courtesy, so you can move forward, tell us your name and your address.
Hello, members of the community.
No, sir, sir, tell us your name and your address.
My name is Marcel Cuffey, I live on 35 Wood Ave.
Okay, thank you, and now we'll put two minutes on the clock for the gentleman. Marcel, please, Mr. Cuffey.
I live with my wife, who's a visiting nurse serving our community and our three children. I've worked in the field of public service for my whole life, serving various communities across the Commonwealth. My most recent and current job is a court officer at Lawrence Fenton Judicial Center. I recently updated my certification from emergency medical responder to emergency medical technician. I'm seeking to serve this community in which I live. I learned that in North Andover, the way to do this was to work for the Fire Department. Working for the Fire Department was an idea I had in the past, but I had not fully committed myself to the process. Deciding now was the time to pursue. I learned that I had missed the cutoff for my age to apply. Bringing me here today, residents of North Andover, I ask your permission to allow me to have the opportunity to apply to serve this community as a firefighter EMT, showing that I am a worthy candidate for the job.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody have any questions about the motion? Sir?
Andrew Rayner, 11A Concord Street. I understand that there's also another, Article 12 has to do with age exemption. Now, my question is, is now, like I said, I'm not fully knowledgeable in everything, no offense, Mr. McCuffey, I love this town too, I know you want to serve it. I'm just asking the question, why is there a limit of 32?
I'll answer that question on behalf of everybody, please direct your question to the legislator, who made that determination.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sometimes...
No, that's quite right.
No. I'd like to say to Mr. McCuffey, welcome to the town.
Thank you.
Yes.
So this is a legislative requirement, and Mr. Cuffey is asking for relief, which is allowed also under the law by a vote of this Town Meeting. Are we ready for a vote, anybody else have questions? I think we're ready for a vote, you may all sit down. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. You may put them down, all those opposed, raise your hand. I declare it a unanimous vote, congratulations, Mr. Cuffey. I'm going to take it a little bit out of order and do Article 12 right now. We have a similar age objection, is rather, age exemption, sorry. Is there a motion on behalf of the article? Is Mr. Baker here? Is Mr. Baker walking to the microphone? He is not. I have attempted multiple times to get in touch with Mr. Baker over the last two weeks to make sure what the protocol was so that he could come to Town Meeting. Notwithstanding that, if anybody wished to do him the courtesy and make a motion, I will allow it. Motion is made, is there a second? Thank you, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you very much, all those opposed, raise your card. So we have a majority vote, I so declare. And now we'll go back to Article 11, which is a little bit different. Is there a motion under Article 11? The gentleman is coming to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
The motion is made, do I hear a second? The motion is made and seconded. Sir, two minutes on the clock.
Good evening, residents of North Andover. My name is Darmish Dawai, and I reside at 87 Main Street. I'm a part-owner and manager of Mukunz LLC, and I'm asking for your support on this article so that the town can submit to the state legislature to increase the number of off-premises all alcohol license in town by one. The store will be located across Rhodes Plaza at 550 Turnpike Street on Route 114. Let me begin by saying that we love, I love this town, I've been a resident here for about five and a half years, my business partner has been a resident for about two years, we have several businesses in town, we have two businesses, actually, in town, and we also have other liquor stores around the neighboring towns in Andover, Haverhill. I really appreciate, somebody printed this for me, this really shows who I am, it proves that I have other businesses in town and around, you know, neighboring towns, and so we are very experienced in this. We're not somebody novice that will open a store and fail or, you know, operate it badly. We are always trying to improve the town, and we support the town all the way. The proposed location already had a liquor store in the past, which has since moved, so I don't, I hope that that would not be a hindrance. This article was well-received by the Town Select Board, and they were very helpful in supporting us, and hopefully, the town of North Andover, you will support us as well.
Sir, finish up the last sentence.
Yes, so I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? Ma'am?
Hello, Mr. Moderator and Board, my name is Barry Ann Fitzgibbons Alonso, I've lived in town for 46 years, I'm a Scarlet Knight. We love this town, my family loves this town. I'm asking that everybody vote no on Article 11. We have, just to clarify, the town has about 32,000 people. By law, you can have one license per 5,000 people. We already have nine, we are three over the quota, he is asking us to push it one further than that. He is asking us to push it one further than that. He's right, there was a liquor store in there before. It's moved to Stop &amp; Shop. My family business has moved into that location. In all disclosure, we have beer and wine. We sell it there in the same plaza. Further down the road, we have another full liquor store. And if you take a right onto 125, we have another beer and wine store. This town does not need another place selling alcohol, especially close to Merrimack College. In addition, out of the nine full licensed alcohol sellers, five of them are born and raised in town. All of them give to your sports leagues, your schools, your art programs, your veterans. A vote for them, for another liquor license, is a vote against everybody who has lived in town this entire life and has supported it. I'm asking you to vote no on Article 11. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the speaker making a disclosure. We have a rule that requires that if you have a financial conflict, either by business and/or relationship, right through brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws, that you have the obligation of declaring it when you come to speak. You, I will give you the opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we would not be asking for additional license. We are asking, there is actually one license available in town. Unfortunately, the location, it's tied to the location where it's at, which is, it used to be called the Bodegas, I believe. It was further down, going towards Middleton. And it was, it's shut down right now. But we would have applied for their license, but unfortunately, the town is not able to give that to us because it's tied to the location. The only reason, and that's the reason we're asking for an additional license in town.
Thank you very much.
And also, we donate as well to all the fire department, police department, and all that too.
Thank you, sir. Sir? We'll allow you the courtesy, sir. New voices.
Hi, Stan Novak, 26 Pembroke Road.
Welcome.
You're part of Mackaloon's, right?
Mr. Moderator.
Sir, sir, let's make this really clear. You speak to the moderator.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Excuse me. You speak to the moderator, the moderator decides if it's an appropriate question, and then hands it off if somebody wishes to answer the question.
I wanted to verify that he was part of Mackaloon's.
Well, let's ask the gentleman.
No, Mr. Moderator, I'm not.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have another query.
Yeah. I don't drink nearly as much as I used to, but
Congratulations.
I would like to encourage everyone to vote for this. There's nothing wrong with competition. If that lady has three licenses, maybe she can give one to him.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we, do we have any other queries? Mr. Rayner, I'm sorry, we have a new voice.
Hello, Lynn Wenzel, 294 Chestnut Street.
Welcome.
Could you have the person clarify where in the plaza the location is?
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Sir?
So the actual store location within the plaza, is that the question?
Yes, that is.
Okay. So currently, we're looking at all open locations within the plaza, but most likely, it'll be next to Triple East Pizza. There's a space open, but in the future, if the space is open, comes about in the front of the plaza, we might decide to try that.
Thank you very much.
But it will be located within the plaza.
Thank you very much. Do we have a final question? Are you stretching, or do you wish to ask a question? Please come forward.
Okay, we know who I am.
You shall repeat your name and address, sir.
Okay. My name is Andrew Rayner, and I live in 118 Concord Street. And first of all, I'm glad that Mr. McCuffey was, I was overriding.
Sir, let's talk about this article.
Okay, yes. That's, it's a perfect springboard. Because again, what I'm saying is that these laws are in place for a reason. And to override the law, and let me also add, I am an alumni of North Andover High School, so I'm speaking in the best interest of the town, in the youth of the town. And part of it is Merrimack College. And the reason why we have these laws in place, now, like I said, I'm perfectly happy with someone who, but, okay, let me go on. The laws are in place for a reason. They've made these laws for a reason, to keep everything safe and, and well, yes, there are reasons why there are laws in place. And so, I mean, like, I see this as kind of trying to override the laws, and that's, I don't think that's a very good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, I can comment to that.
Actually, no, let's, sir?
Michael Donnelly, 544 Johnson Street.
Welcome, sir.
The gentleman has said that there isn't an existing license in town that is tied to a specific location. Is it the purview of the town licensing board or the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission to change that location from the current location to the location where this gentleman wants?
Let's get an answer to that question from the licensing board, if that's possible.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Please.
That license was created in the same way that this license is being created. So they put a home rule petition on town meeting for the actual address, and it went before the state legislature. So in order to change that license, we also would have to go before the state legislature.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Etan Goldberg, 125 Sawmill Road. Just to the point about these laws, this law is so ridiculously antiquated, and it really should be up to our state legislatures to get rid of it and get the town the ability to give out licenses, just like we license everything else. So I'd be in favor of giving them the extra license, and frankly, we should get rid of this law entirely, so.
Thank you. That's not our purview, but I appreciate it. Sir, we're done. Do we have a last question or comments, or I'll give you the courtesy?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a remark about what the other gentleman said. And actually, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Okay.
I apologize.
You can blame me, it's quite all right. Do we have a query? Yes, we do.
Christina Dennis, 777 Johnson Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm wondering, is your establishment-
Again, to me.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if the establishment is just to sell beer and wine and alcohol, or if there will be other grocery items, like a convenience store.
Let's get an answer to that question if the gentleman wishes.
Mr. Moderator, we might carry maybe a small rack of chips or something that goes with the alcohol and beer and wine, but nothing major. I mean, we'll probably have cigarettes and lottery in addition to-
And no Slim Jims?
It's Slim Jims, yes.
It was my favorite when I was a kid, so.
So that I guess it would be my opinion that our town is already saturated. Our town is already saturated with establishments that sell hard alcohol and beer and wine.
Thank you. Do we have any, yes, we have another.
Mr. Moderator, may I?
No, you may not.
Yes, Matt Willis, 100 Longwood Avenue.
Welcome again.
And so once we, if we were to permit this as a town, that will be permanent, and he would be able to take that license and sell it to another entity because it will now be in existence?
Let's see if we can get an answer to that question.
Mr. Moderator, the license would be tied to the address moving forward. A future applicant would still have to come before the select board as licensing commission, and still have to have the license approved by the ABCC. So they can't automatically give the license to another person. They still have to go through a process. But it would forever be tied to that plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? I will give you 15 seconds, sir.
I was just gonna say, we do not plan on selling that license.
Thank you very much.
Not for a long time.
I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to afford the citizen's petition, please raise your card. You may put them down, thank you. All those opposed? I declare it a majority vote. Thank you, sir. A majority vote in favor of the petition. We'll move on to the next article. Hold on a second. Hold on. Hold on, hold, please, please. If you doubt the vote, seven people need to rise, it's as simple as seven people rising. I see seven people rising, thank you very much. And we'll now move forward to a count of the vote. So if the tellers are ready? Tellers in place? Mr. Coco? We're good, thank you very much. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 11 who wish to vote yes, please raise your card. Excuse me, for the folks in this section here, did you get Mr. Darmesh? Okay. The tellers will tell you whether you can put your card down or not. I have no more announcements, so I can't entertain you while this is going on. I apologize. I, no, I cannot sing. Well, I'm capable of singing, but you do not wish to hear me? Never. We want to make sure that we get it right, everybody, so thank you for your patience. Tellers, are we ready? Yes, you may all put your cards down, thank you very much. So we'll call out section by section those who voted aye. Section one? I hear 96? Sorry, thank you. 36. That's why we go back and forth. Section two? 5-0, 50. Section three? 4-0, 40. Section four? 43, section four. Section five? 2-0, 20? Let's, let's hear it again. 14, thank you very much, 14. Section six? Section? 27. Section seven? Section eight? 11? Section nine? Which is the stage? 14. So all, thank you very much. All sections have reported? Excuse me? I haven't.
Section nine.
Now we'll go to those who do not support the motion as made, you're voting no. Please raise your card. Keep them up while people count. We have double counters, so we make sure that each counter, who are separated, are actually, have an agreed count after it's done. Mr. Darmesh, would you please sit down?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice that we get to do this in the sunshine on a breezy evening. Tellers, if you've completed your count, you may tell your section to put their cards down. Tellers, if I might make a suggestion, I'd ask you to come forward so we're not screening. Are we ready, everybody? We are good. Okay, if the tellers would please come forward? Section one, the no vote, please. Section one?
Section one's not ready.
They're not ready. I apologize. Thank you. Let's, we'll wait then until section one is ready. Everybody else come up so we can come right to the microphones. And we'll do this henceforth as well. Are we ready, section one? Please come up to the microphone. As you can appreciate, I want to say thank you to all the volunteer tellers today who have been sworn in to do this duty. Thank you. Section one?
37.
37. Section two? 43. Section three? 72. Section four? 78. Section five? 2-6. Section seven? Section six, sorry. 11. Section seven? 0. Section nine, 8, excuse me. 7. And section nine? 2. And the stage, I'm sorry? 5. So the vote, thank you for the privilege of taking a, a count. So the motion does not pass. We have the stage. Oh, I'm sorry. Check that. Yeah, we recorded it correctly.
Section ten isn't listed.
Yes, we did, we have it correctly. Okay. So the vote in the affirmative was two thirty-five. The vote in the negative is two eighty-one. The motion does not pass. And I, and I thank you for doubting my eyesight. We will now move on to Article twenty-seven.
Good for zoning?
Please.
I'm, Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrants. Move to adopt Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrants.
The motion is made, is there a second? I hear a second. Do we have a presentation?
No presentation, Mr. Moderator. This is a, basically a housekeeping provision. So in two thousand nineteen, Town Meeting voted to approve some dimensional changes to the Corridor Development District. As part of our zoning bylaw, we have kind of a handy chart that talks about lot area and footage requirements and setbacks, but it's not as handy when we don't actually change it to match the zoning. So the zoning was changed in two thousand nineteen, we just need to update the chart to match what was passed in two thousand nineteen, and that's what this article does.
Thank you. Are there any questions about Article twenty-seven? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article, please raise your card. I think we're good. Those opposed? I see a clear majority, thank you very much.
A supermajority?
Supermajority, yes. It needed, required a two-thirds vote. So I declare a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-eight.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrants.
So done, is there a motion? Motion is made and, I'm sorry, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So this is to allow in the Building Four District to add another category of personal service establishments. The Business Four is a business district in town, allows for many types of businesses, business and professional offices, some retail, places of worship, public buildings, hotels, art galleries, things of the like. But it, for some reason, did not allow personal service establishments, which are like barber shops, hair salons, nail salons, things of that like, spas, things of that like. Someone who wanted to open one came to the board, asked for kind of a zoning change in just that one location, but we thought it was better to make the change for the Business Four District as a whole, to allow that by right. If it's a already established building, most likely would probably need to come back to the planning board anyway for some sort of special permit if the size was increased. So we thought it was a good addition to the Business Four District.
Thank you, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. You may put them down. All those opposed to the motion? I declare it a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Article twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would move to adopt Article twenty-nine as printed in the warrants.
The motion is made and seconded, sir?
Article twenty-nine deals with the Downtown Overlay District, Part Two, Sub-District A, the Historic Mill Area, so this is the Mills downtown. This is similar to the last one, allowing personal service establishments. So when the mill zoning was initially created, it did not allow for barber shops and the like. A few years ago, before the planning board and before Town Meeting, there was, I believe before Town Meeting, but there was a request to amend that for one location, which is the Restoration Barber Shop, which has now been added, and this would just allow other personal service establishments in the Mill Area Zone.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? Please come forward. Anybody else has a question? Please queue up. Please come closer and pull the mic down so you.
Are you saying I'm short?
I'm saying no such thing.
Robin Morgeson, one forty-seven High Street. My question is, I'm looking at the details, and, and the list of permitted uses is a lot more extensive than barber shop, et cetera. It has multiple family dwellings, townhomes, et cetera, so I'm curious about that.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to answer, sir?
Thank you, Robin. So one through nineteen are, already exist in the zoning today. That's already what's there. The change is just adding number twenty, personal service establishment. So we, it's just printed to show you what's actually there today, and the underlined one, personal service establishment, is the only thing that we're voting on making that change. Everything else already exists in that district.
Okay, cool. Thank you for the clarification.
You're very welcome. Any others? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your card. And those opposed? I declare it a two-thirds vote, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would move to.
Allow me a moment.
Of course.
And we'll announce that we're on Article thirty. Sir?
I would move to adopt Article thirty as printed in the warrants.
The motion is made. I hear a second. And do you have any discussion, sir?
Just a brief explanation, again, this is a, really a non-substantive change. This is our watershed protection district. We're always looking to just make sure it's as up to date as possible, and our Planning Director, Jean Enright, looked at this, and there was some language in there that was either confusing, or that it said non-discharge when it was supposed to say non- disturb, or said general, there were, there were just changes that needed to be made to update it, to make it what's been kind of adopted over the years. We also added a chart, just so that people looking at the watershed boundaries could better delineate where they were in our bylaws, as maybe composed of state law and things like that. So it's really just a, a kind of a clean up with minor edits to just clarify the already existing zoning.
Thank you. A question?
Yes, Miss, twenty, Stan Novak, twenty-six Pembroke Road.
Thank you.
In Part One, for the general zone, it looks like four hundred is scratched out, replaced with three twenty-five. I would like to know why.
So let's see if we can get an answer.
Probably defer to the planning director if we.
I'm sorry, you need to speak up.
I, I don't know offhand if that, what that cha, I assume that was a change for something that already existed, but I'd probably defer to the planning director on that.
Can somebody answer that question? We're getting somebody to answer that question for you?
Hello, Jean Enright, Planning Director for the town. The change is just to make it consistent with the chart on page fifty-five, and so we have a chart that differentiates parcels that were constructed after nineteen ninety-four versus prior to nineteen ninety-four, and when that zoning change went in, the narrative was an update to reflect the changes post nineteen ninety-four.
I think we're good there? Please.
Lynn Langton, ten Surrey Drive.
Let's try this again, please. I ask you to speak up and get a little closer.
Lynn Langton, ten Surrey Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was confused with reading this article also. I'm trying to understand if it's increasing the protections for Lake Kichwick or shrinking them, because I also saw that it was going from four hundred to three twenty-five, to one fifty, to one hundred, and I'd also like, could the Conservation Commission weigh in on this too? Thank you.
Okay. Nobody is required to answer a question, but I'm happy to ask the Conservation Commission or Administrator or some responsible party to do so.
Mr. Moderator.
And if you have that.
Thank you for the question. So it's not actually changing any of the boundaries. As, as Jean mentioned, it's taking what's already been enacted and is in the chart, so the chart is what's kind of the operating law, but the narrative just didn't get changed to match the chart. So none of the, none of the boundaries are actually being changed. In reality, there's just matching what's already, the narrative is just matching what's the already existing law already is.
Satisfied? Okay, any other questions? Sir?
Andrew Raynor, eleven-eight Concord Street. I, I'd like to speak in favor of this, in the sense that I, I felt as if, at first I didn't really understand it, but then I, I kind of did, and not only that, but these are the professionals who are dealing with it, and we're changing the law here in a town meeting. So I, I mean, like, I, I was a theater major in high school, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm better in literature, I'm not very good with numbers, not very good with math, finances, but I kind of understood what they were doing, and I know that they're the professionals at this, and they were hired for a reason for this. And so I'd like to speak in favor of this, and I'm going to vote in favor for this. Thank you very much.
I'm sure they thank you, let's play on. We ready? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. All those opposed, raise your card. The motion clearly passes by a two-thirds vote, thank you. Article thirty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt Article thirty-one as printed in the planning board report.
The motion is made, is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you very much. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, this is an amendment to our sign bylaw. Recent, or somewhat recent Supreme Court precedent, doesn't usually make it down to town meeting, but in this case it has, that signs and sign bylaws have to be content neutral, meaning we can't regulate it based on what the sign says, but it can be regulated based on the size and the location and things like that. So this was really looked through and crafted by our town council, and then it became for the planning board with some amendments in the planning board report, just to correspond with some amendments to the sign bylaw that came at a previous town meeting. So this is to make our sign bylaw content neutral, so we would ask that it be supported so that we can be in compliance with the Constitution.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Max Butterbrot, why don't you take off your mask if you wish, sir?
One eighteen Brookview Drive, asking a question on behalf of the remote question team. Karen Fogg of five seventeen Ray Street asks, "Do the changes to the sign regulations allow residents to have signs in their lawn to advertise for political candidates, display pride in graduating children, and advocate for certain values? Please specify which regulation."
Thank you very much. Can somebody answer that question?
I mean, the idea of the bylaw is to be content neutral, so the, the answer to that is no, it wouldn't prevent you from generally putting up a, it doesn't, I guess the point is it doesn't matter what your sign says. It can say what it wants in general, but it generally has to meet certain height and regulations and things like that. I mean, it doesn't address the content.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none, I think we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. And those opposed, thank you very much. I declare a two-thirds vote, thank you. Article thirty-two. Do I hear a motion for Article thirty-two?
Mr. Ma, Mr. Moderator, I so moved that the town of Northand over amend zoning bylaws, section one nine.
Sir, all, all that's necessary is that which is printed.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
By, I'm sorry, by adding a new subsection entitled Building Moratorium, Multifamily Dwellings, is printed in warrant Article thirty-two.
Thank you very much. There is a motion, is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? I see a second, thank you. Allow me a courtesy first before we start. I think we're here for the show, and this is the principal article of the day. There will be a series of speakers by arrangement with proponents, opponents, and sanctioned town boards. I've enjoyed dozens of conversations and email communications with both sets of principals. We've had lots of baseball analogies, Joe?
Yes, we have.
For those who don't know, Joe Finn's son, Derek, is the leadoff batter and starting shortstop for the champion Northandover Knights, who are running towards another championship, we hope. All, each of the proponents, the principal opponents and the principal opponents, have agreed that they, that they wish that there be to no amendments to this article, and that we have a clean up or down vote. That is not a requirement. Any member is welcome to make a, a motion or an amendment, but I wanted you to be aware of what the principal proponents and opponents have agreed. And with that, we'll move to Mr. Finn. He has five minutes in order to make a motion, excuse me, an argument, and then we'll move to a series of other five-minute arguments. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, my name is Joe Finn, forty-eight Surrey Drive. Article thirty-two is a citizen petition. It would enact a two-year housing moratorium for multifamily dwellings of three or more units and allow for studies. Why do we need a moratorium? Rapid growth affects our schools, roadway infrastructure, and traffic, police, fire, water and sewer operations, and every other town services. The two-year pause on high-density housing is meant to give the time, the town time to better plan for our future. In addition to that, one, we are at eighty-five percent of our freshwater draw limit from the town lake. We need a plan for drawing water from another source, and we need to plan for the costs associated with water infrastructure improvements. Two, nearly six hundred residential units are permitted at four locations, and the actual impact is unclear on our town services. The aggregate cost and overall impact of this spurt in development must be clear before we add more high-density development. Three, the current school capacity study contemplates future growth at forty-eight students per year. The proposed development at Royal Crest would add two hundred and thirty-six students alone. New and future development will adversely affect traffic on our already crowded roadways. Five, the sewage infrastructure may not be able to handle the impact of additional volume, which would endanger the Merrimack River and increase the frequency and volume of raw sewage releases. Six, given the tax limitations imposed under Prop two and a half, how will Northandover fund the excess burden? Our population is growing at almost double the Commonwealth State and sixty percent faster than Essex County. The growth in number of children is disproportionate to the state and county. Our town saw a five percent increase, while the state as a whole saw a decrease of three point seven percent. Reports and findings of previous studies have delivered inconsistent and conflicting data, including the Housing Protection Plan that projected a twenty percent decrease in school-aged children, while the School Capacity Subcommittee projects a one percent increase. What will the moratorium do? One, it allows for the completion of studies to determine full extent of the impacts of our town services from recently approved developments. Two, it will determine the exact amount of additional development our town can take before we are forced to draw water from the Merrimack River. Three, it encourages the creation of affordable housing options for our seniors, veterans, and those struggling to afford our increasingly expensive town. Four. Four, it will allow exploration of zoning options to help maintain the town feel and character of North Andover. Five, it increases our focus on commercial growth, including retail and restaurants, creating more balance between housing development and economic development. Increased focus on commercial growth provides steady increases in the revenue stream for our town while minimizing draws on town services. Six, it sends a message to town boards and administration that the vision they are pursuing for our town is not acceptable to town residents. One of the major concerns of our residents is cited in the master plan. One, limited school capacity. Two, traffic congestion increasing with more housing density. Three, potential to lose natural resources and open spaces as town develops. Four, deep concern over traffic and safety along neighborhood streets. What has the Planning and Select Board done to address these concerns? One, favored nearly six hundred market-rate units, which added more students to our schools and thousands of additional vehicle trips to our already congested streets. Two, failed to provide residents with water capacity studies, traffic study results, and estimated costs to our school, police, fire, and recreation departments prior to residents voting on zoning changes. Three, eagerly entertaining proposals for Royal Crest to construct over thirteen hundred housing units, college dorms, and a hotel. North Andover facts, population is already denser than the state average and growing at almost twice the state's average. Two, based on two thousand and fifteen data, North Andover already had a healthy inventory of multifamily dwellings of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two units before adding eighteen percent more in multifamily units. The two thousand and fifteen low vacancy rate equates to four hundred and fifty available housing units. Four, we have some of the highest class sizes in the Commonwealth, and our schools are at or over capacity, with the exception of the high school and sergeant school. Five, we are going into our last year of the two thousand and eighteen Housing Production Plan, and the planning board has failed to implement the vast majority of the recommendations. Creation of high-priced rentals was not on the list. Allowing developers to build luxury market housing does not solve the housing burden on owners and renters. The rapid approval of high-density housing contradicts many of the public forum comments in the master plan. The goals of the master plan illustrate that there was no consensus over the direction of housing. Town meeting is our legislature. We have the right and duty to determine and debate the future of housing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Now we have an agreed-upon principal opponent. If they'd please come forward. At the conclusion of the next remarks, we'll come to the stage and then come to discussion and question from the audience.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Come a little closer to your address, sir.
My name is Bill Callahan. My pronouns are he/him, and I live at twenty-three Lyman Road, North Andover. I am a member of the North Andover Fair Housing Alliance, which is an ad hoc group of citizens who oppose this ban. We chose fair housing as our title as we believe that the current permitting processes provide a fair, comprehensive, and thorough set of guidelines for housing production in North Andover. If we were to fast-forward two years and thirteen days from now under the ban being proposed here tonight, this is what would be true. Many small property owners, some of whom live in their multifamily houses, will have delayed or forgone the opportunity to renovate their buildings while interest rates are historically low. As the law is drafted, it reads, "No new building permits shall be issued for the construction of multifamily dwellings." It does not make a distinction between brand-new properties and existing properties. Two, developers will be planning or building developments, which don't have to be negotiated to the same extent with town government, like Chapter forty-B projects. Three, the town will have been in court regarding this ill-drafted and poorly thought-through plan. This ban misses the mark. If the proponents are opposed to the Royal Crest development as currently imagined, they can vote down any zoning changes brought by the developer at town meeting. Instead, they'll stop smaller projects, which can only happen in three point eight of North Andover's land currently zoned for multifamily housing. That three point eight percent is compared to thirty-six percent zoned as single-family residential and thirty-five percent open space and recreation land. This ban will hurt local businesses and town finances. Fewer housing units means fewer customers in local shops and restaurants. Fewer housing units means less tax revenue for town services. The work done by the School Capacity Planning Subcommittee Study shows that multifamily housing provides tax revenue well in excess of the services used by its residents. This ban will result in less control over what gets built in North Andover. Affordable housing under Chapter forty-B can still proceed while the town is under its ten percent affordable target. Developers have the right to proceed with much less input from the town, and the resultant developments only need to provide one affordable unit for every three or four market-rate units built. This ban will see housing prices rise. The state's population is growing. The Merrimack Valley's population is growing. And North Andover does not exist in a vacuum. Homes, apartments, condominiums will all become more expensive if the supply is choked off. In two thousand and eighteen, the median income family in North Andover placed a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar affordability gap, the difference between what they can afford to pay for a house and the median sale price. The most profound loss posed by this ban will be human. Seniors looking to downsize and stay in town. Young families looking to get established and raise families in our town. Teachers and municipal employees who want to live in our community will have fewer options, and many will go elsewhere. Other communities will welcome their talents and contributions. I would ask my fellow citizens to vote no on this question, and I would challenge them to increase their involvement through the many avenues for participation in town governments. Comment at Planning Board meetings. Attend Master Plan Implementation Committee meetings. Channel these energies into the places which will make a difference in our community's health. A simple ban is not going to make our community any better.
Thank you. We are now going to go to the stage, and the Select Board will make a first recommendation statutorily. They're asked to make a recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Friends, neighbors, the proposed moratorium...
A little closer, Chris, and state your name.
Okay. Chris Nobley, three seventeen Hillside Road. Chris Nobley, three seventeen Hillside Road, Chair of the Select Board. My friends, neighbors, the proposed moratorium raises an important question. As a select board, we'll highlight the critical facts from this presentation. We review the work, the expertise, and the process that have earned North Andover the reputation as a family and business-friendly community, and has protected us. The question is, do you want to support a fair process for all? We have a very solid and transparent process ensuring healthy, equitable, fair housing from the dedicated work from our fellow citizens on the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and Conservation Boards. The proposed moratorium ignores and short-circuits that process. It makes development less responsive to the community. Such uncertainty will affect businesses and their decision to locate here and who they hire. A pause with permanent impacts. Let's be a hundred percent clear. The proposed moratorium does not stop development. Oh, commercial and retail expansion would continue. So what are we really talking about here? Stopping a family who owns a three-unit property from rehabilitating that now. We're talking about sending a message to teachers, young professionals, and young families who want to contribute to North Andover that they need to live elsewhere. Is this who we are? Restrictive, or are we going to be inclusive?
Laura Bates, twenty-six Woodbridge Road. One of the biggest...
I'm sorry, I don't think you were being... Is the microphone on?
It is, yeah.
Okay. You need to get closer. And let's add another twenty seconds. We'll do it on the back end.
Laura Bates, twenty-six Woodbridge Road. One of the biggest impacts of the moratorium will be financial. Our current tax levy only allows for level funding of our schools. Over the next few years, we know that the schools will require major renovation and construction to meet the needs of all our students. Without new growth, these costs are going to fall directly on our residents in the form of an override or debt exclusion. The studies that have been requested have been completed, and this article has no funding source for the new studies. One of our treasures in town is Lake Kichchitewa, and it deserves to be protected. However, the last time that we had a water restriction was back in two thousand and sixteen, while many of our surrounding communities have yearly water restrictions. We're only drawing eighty percent of safe yield from the lake in our sewer system. It's only being used at fifty-seven percent capacity, and our master plan has indicated that we have excess capacity of water and sewer. The Housing Production Plan notes that small families and the elderly are the most burdened by the high housing costs in North Andover. Between two thousand and two thousand and fifteen, North Andover only permitted thirty-seven multifamily units. We must encourage multiple types of housing, support our elderly to age in place, encourage housing that is affordable, and consider the high-density housing where appropriate. By passing the moratorium and only allowing forty-B development, we lose our seat at the negotiating table to find the best solution for our town, North Andover.
Richard Valancourt, four fifty-four Stevens Street. I'd like to speak to the affordability gap that was mentioned earlier. So currently, we do have an affordability gap in North Andover. The average home price is six hundred thousand dollars. The average affordability for the medium household is about four hundred and nineteen thousand. That leaves about a two hundred and thirty K affordability gap. Who does that impact? That impacts low-income families. That impacts the single-parent homes who want to raise their children in North Andover. That impacts the families, the young families starting out, some of our kids that want to stay in the town that they grew up in. That impacts retired folks who want to stay in the town that they grew up in, that they contributed to for their entire lives. They want to stay in North Andover. It impacts them. It impacts active and retired military, men and women who want to come back to the town that they grew up in after serving their country. A no vote on Article thirty-two ensures affordable housing options for all. Let me talk a little bit about the process that we currently have in place for permitting multifamily apartments. The first process that is gone through, and I'm skipping forward to the graph or the flowchart if you have it in your package. The first is that if the project doesn't meet zoning requirements and a zoning article or a zoning amendment is needed, this board and this legislative body, I'm sorry, not this board, this legislative body needs to make that change at town meeting. It has to be a two-thirds vote. Let me just go back a little bit in history since two thousand and thirteen. A two-thirds vote was needed for the Osgood forty-R project. This body was the one that had to take that vote. The Avalon project that's being built today, that was a vote in two thousand and fifteen, Article nine, that approved that project to move forward. The Princeton Properties project at Fajetta Farm, that was a two thousand and sixteen vote of town meeting that approved it. Minco at the KFC, that was also a vote, two articles, twenty-three and twenty-four in two thousand and eighteen, that approved that property to go forward. Royal Crest, if it does go forward, would also require a two-thirds vote of this body, this legislative body. My point is, we always have the opportunity to vote on these. We don't need a moratorium. We have that in front of us at town meeting. As a legislative body, we can debate it. Voting on a moratorium takes that out of our hands. I'd also like to mention...
We've exceeded our time. Is the body comfortable with me giving another thirty or forty seconds to the Select Board?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay. So I will, I will just talk about the master plan. The master plan we did in two thousand and eighteen, we had two public forums. We had two hundred and sixty people attend. We had a lot of input at those forums. And from that master plan, we came out with a number of items. This particular moratorium will directly negatively impact eleven of those strategies. It will indirectly negatively impact two strategies. It will positively impact three strategies and is neutral on three others. That was a finding of the Master Plan Subcommittee, Implementation Subcommittee. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Janice, and I apologize for going over.
We are done in terms of our presentation from the Select Board. We'll now go to the Planning Board for their recommendation. Planning Board has up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't think I'll need five minutes. The Planning Board unanimously voted to not recommend favorable action on this article. As most of you know, the Planning Board has been talking a lot about the Royal Crest development. There's been, it's all in the discussion phase at this point. But this moratorium seems to really focus on that. So just a few things. This moratorium says that we need studies. As mentioned earlier, the Planning Board, the town, has already done practically all of those studies, the master plan, the housing production. For each of the developments discussed by Mr. Valancourt, traffic studies were done. School capacity studies were done. Lighting studies, noise studies, those were all done, peer-reviewed, and presented. I know it's hard to try to pay attention to all the things that are going on in town. There's a lot, especially Planning Board meetings are long and pretty boring. But this information is out there, okay? So it has come before the town, and it has come before the boards when any of these projects have been approved. These projects have all that have been approved have gone through scaling back as part of questions and comments that have come from the Planning Board, from the Select Board, and from citizens. Building heights reduced, numbers of residents reduced, all through the permitting process. This particular moratorium is very overbroad. As you heard, it would cover anything from a three-family to a hundred-unit, two-hundred-unit, three-hundred-unit multifamily. What we're missing out on is the unknown opportunities. So if someone wants to build a ten-unit condo for seniors or a five-unit for fifty-five-plus or some affordable housing in a twelve-unit or twenty-unit, we don't know if those properties are going to come before us in the next two years, and this moratorium makes it impossible for them to do so. As Mr. Valancourt and others have said, the Royal Crest, if we wanted to go forward with that project, would have to come before town meeting. To correct some information, the most recent proposal proposed by the Royal Crest developers would actually have less schoolchildren than there are there today. So the schoolchildren argument really doesn't hold water. Going to water, as you heard, and I think you'll hear from the town manager, that's not an issue in reality in terms of our water use and our capacity. We're well under capacity. We haven't had a water restriction in years. And frankly, when you think about it, the most use of water in town is sprinklers and lawns and swimming pools, not people showering and using the toilet. Okay? So if we think about it rationally, this moratorium is not doing all the things that it's promising you to do. It will provide less finances for the town and will, in fact, burden the town. What it doesn't allow, as stated, is for the planning process to go through. Each of the developments that have come before have taken years, months, years, to go through the permitting process and years to build. The last thing is that we did hear something about the character of the town, and I would just say that the character of the town is the people, not the buildings. So I think if we really look at the numbers and the information and the planning process that we have, we'd say that this isn't really a good idea and that there are other ways. that we have, we'd say that this isn't really a good idea, and that there are other ways we can put in. If you want to talk about affordable housing, let's make an inclusionary zoning bylaw. Let's increase our in-law apartments so that people have more options. There are a lot of discreet ways to get at some of the issues that are mentioned without, frankly, using a bulldozer. So that's what I would ask that you vote no.
Thank you, Sarah. We now have, I understand, a short statement from the finance committee.
Thank you. Sasha Weinrich, 21-
We can't hear you. You need to pull in very close.
Have to get closer. Sasha Weinrich, 21 Sawyer Road. Article 32 is a citizen's petition regarding a building moratorium on multifamily dwellings consisting of three or more units in any town zoning district. While the finance committee does not vote to take a formal action on non-financial articles such as this, we do believe it is prudent to outline potential financial impacts of this building moratorium. If Article 32 is passed, it will eliminate all extraordinary new growth that is a result of multifamily development, which impacts the ability for our community to fund budgets above level services. Additionally, there are a list of several studies that the article states the town must conduct. The finance committee is concerned that no appropriation is made in the budget to cover the cost of these studies to be performed. Separately, according to town administration, most of the stated studies have already been performed and remain current. As such, the town has already spent over $670,000 on these impact studies. Lastly, if Article 32 is passed, North Andover will no longer qualify as a housing choice community. The loss of this designation may result in the potential loss of $500,000 over two years in grant funding. This designation also gives North Andover additional points towards other state grants, so additional funds in excess of the $500,000 loss may also occur. Given the financial needs of our community, these potential losses and potentially redundant expenses could prove significant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move to the floor now for questions and comment. I ask you to not be duplicative, that try to inform the meeting in terms of what it is that we wish to provide in terms of information. And I think we'll give it a half an hour or so, and then see if we're ready to move to the question. Prior to that, as people queue, I have a small announcement here. If Jessica, who lives on Kachikowick Street, born on the 3rd of March, checks her wallet, I have her license, it was left behind, so please come see me. Don't worry about coming up to the stage, or I can discreetly hand it to you later. So, thank you, everybody. Our first comment, please.
Mr. Moderator.
Pull it close.
Short.
Not at all. We hope you'll be short.
I'm Janice Phillips. I live at 355 Osgood Street. A moratorium is simply bad practice. Losing our housing choice designation disqualifies us from the $2 million in grant applications we have currently submitted, and we have a priority designation at this time. A ban will continue to drive up sale and rent prices, further decreasing accessibility and attainability. A moratorium leads to missed opportunity to increase jobs and our tax revenue. Those additional CPA funds we'd receive means we'd have more money to spend on affordable housing, parks and recreation, and preservation of open space. My family and I have lived in North Andover for 16 years. My kids are involved in multiple sports and activities. We volunteer in the schools, in the farmer's market, and much, much more. It is my privilege to be currently serving as a member of the select board. We have lived in two homes in our time here, and both are multifamily. When you ban multifamily homes, you are banning families like mine who cannot otherwise afford to live here. These are not the values we uphold as a community.
Thank you. Step forward. As each party queues, please step forward.
Thank you. Eli Adler Roth, 114 Beverly Street. My pronouns are he, him, and his. I am speaking tonight against the housing ban. I'm grateful to my friends and neighbors who will touch on the myriad other reasons. This is a misguided article, but I'd like to talk specifically tonight about who gets left behind when there are not enough homes. Massachusetts is in the midst of a housing crisis. A healthy economy has a 7% vacancy rate; ours is less than half of that, and the lack of housing supply is driving up the costs for the rest of us. Nowhere do I see the impacts of that more than at my job as a social worker focused on domestic violence. At least once a week, I speak with a survivor who tells me she would like to leave her abusive partner, but she's unable to because she has nowhere else to go. Shelters are full, abusers control their savings, and a town like North Andover doesn't have affordable options. Survivors and those who love them know how hard it is to break free from the cycle of abuse. Think about how much harder that choice is for a North Andover mom who would have to consider pulling her children from school and away from their friends and their community because this town lacks affordable options. Housing is personal for me as well. Two years ago, my family was birthed, blessed with the birth of our first child, and last year, my brother moved to town, an apartment in Heritage Green. My brother works in the kitchen at a senior-assisted living facility. He has disabilities. He cannot afford nor maintain a single-family home on his own. Because this is a town that has multi-unit housing, my brother, who does not drive, gets to live within walking distance of his niece. I am so grateful he got in when he did, before prices climbed out of reach, but this ban could make it so people like my brother would have to find somewhere else to live regardless of the ties they have to their community. Listen, I can understand the lack of enthusiasm many of my neighbors have for projects which include luxury apartments, but so much so that I want to pull up the ladder behind me and slam the door on everything else? Absolutely not. We will always be North Andover, but let's be a North Andover that honors the contributions of all the people who find home here: survivors of domestic violence, people with disabilities, seniors looking to downsize, and everybody else. Please vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is this a team?
You can get four minutes.
Two minutes.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Kelly Cormier. I live at 169 Andover Street.
Welcome.
I'm speaking today as the chairwoman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I will be joined by a fellow committee member who will finish speaking on behalf of the group. I would ask voters to please view the document entitled "Master Plan Implementation Committee Report Regarding Article 32," which is found both in the online documents as well as in a separate page in the printed material, as we speak regarding the town's master plan, the master plan implementation committee, and the committee's completed framework on Article 32. The master plan was completed in 2018 and provides a long-range vision for the built environment of our community and serves as a roadmap for its future. The master plan should be considered as a living reference document that is intended to lay out a series of steps for improving the community for the people who live, work, and visit North Andover. The document helps the town understand the opportunities, challenges before it, and then use regulations, policies, and financial resources to align the outcomes of the goals of the plan. Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81D calls for the master plan to develop a set of goals and recommendations to convey the community's vision, as well as an implementation section that covers each of the seven elements in the plan. North Andover's planning board is responsible for adopting the plan as well as amending and updating it over time. The Master Plan Implementation Committee was created to serve as an advisory body tasked to work closely with town officials, the planning board, and the select board to prioritize master plan recommendations for implementation and funding. All right, I'm going to break here, and my fellow committee member will pick up with the rest of the information.
We have 12 seconds.
Mr. Moderator, Jonathan Strauss, 23 Old Farm Road. If I may ask for a slight extension here, please.
I'll give you 30.
Okay. To date, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has recommended that the select board formally adopt a complete streets policy, which they have recently completed. Additionally, the MPIC has created a framework to review and analyze major projects and initiatives before the town with regard to the stated strategies and goals of the master plan. The Master Plan Implementation Committee has utilized this framework for the proposed two-year multifamily housing moratorium. The results of this review were presented to both the select board and the planning board. Please refer to your packets if you haven't already.
Last sentence, sir.
When you apply the master plan's review framework to the proposed multifamily housing moratorium, the committee found that 19 of the 103 stated elements of the master plan had some measure of applicability, either directly or indirectly.
Thank you, Sarah. We need to be fair to everybody. I know that you anticipated four minutes. I apologize for that. Next.
Bruce Barclay, 55 Stone Cleve Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have a question for select board member Smedeely. She's on the record as supporting this article, and I'm hoping she would share her reasons for doing so.
She does not have the obligation of answering, but we can ask if she chooses to.
I think it's important to know that I believe that the proponents of this article and the people who are against the article, we all support the same thing, and it's affordable housing. What's happened right now is with this moratorium, it allows for the affordable housing to come to town with the developers because what they're doing is they're doing market-rate housing. We need to get to our affordable number in order for proper planning. I could touch upon some of the things that other people have already said that are concerning. It is the water, it is traffic, it is schools, it is the crowding in schools, not enough housing for our elderly community. This moratorium pushes the developers to take another look at affordable housing for this town. We are growing at a fast rate, faster than most communities in the state of Massachusetts and in the Merrimack Valley. So what this does is a two-year pause to get our facts, get our plans, and put forth affordable housing for the people of North Andover who deserve it most, as so many of my colleagues and people have already said: for young families and for elderly, even single young adults. We need more housing. It would have been great if we had affordable housing right alongside where our new senior center is. The developer has chosen not to do that. So what this does is force the developers to follow the route of affordable housing. And I think the most important reason why I'm not supporting it, it's not that I don't support affordable housing, but it is the rapid growth and the quality of life in the town of North Andover. Preserving open space, preserving our quality of water, our schools, and traffic, it's quality-of-life issues that this pause will help us to address before it gets away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My mother told me to go home when the streetlights come on, so we're going to try to move this along very quickly, and I'm very rapidly going to move questions or comments to one minute. Not quite yet, so let's see if we can move forward quickly, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jennifer Fresson, and I live at 35 Hawthorne Place. I'm speaking against the moratorium. Over the last few years, we've had our town explode, and a pandemic turned our lives upside down for over a year. None of us could have predicted these events. Before they happened, I would have laughed at you if you told me they were about to happen. We have no idea what's going to happen to our town over the next two years. The one thing that I do know is that if anything does happen, our hands will be tied by this article. Doing that defies all common sense. If people are frustrated with how our processes work, they should bring us an article proposing changes. If people want a study that hasn't already been done, they should bring us an article that mandates and funds a study. The proponents are now claiming that unpaid amateurs will do the study, but they're really papering over their mistake of not setting aside any money. They didn't think through their own article, let alone its consequences. They didn't even manage to prepare a presentation to go with their speech today. Article 32 is asking us for one thing: to give up our power to make decisions for two years and cross our fingers that it works out. It's irresponsible, and I ask my fellow residents to join me in voting no.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rayner, you've spoken many times, and I'm going to ask you to limit it to 30 seconds and only if you have something new to say.
Very good. Andrew Rayner, 118 Concord Street. Now, I'm absolutely befuddled. There's a lot of information. I second for another town meeting to research this topic. Furthermore, I work at a women's discernment house and a religious order. I'm here for the people tonight, not spirituality, and my intention is to say, well, just as well, it's like on the one hand, if we okay this because we need to make affordable housing for the elderly, then we got this high-rise in place, and what about the... So I'm hearing two, you know, conflicting messages here, and, you know, if I have to go homeless about this, that's why I've given up everything.
Thank you, sir.
Stalin said that the death of one person is a tragedy, as the death of many people is a... And I'm not leaving this town if I go homeless. If a single mother wants my home, she can take it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Bradley Caldwell. I live at 253 Hickory Hill Road.
Come a little closer.
And I'm speaking in opposition. I'm a lifelong resident of North Andover. I was born and raised here. I went to Kittredge School, the middle school, and graduated from the North Andover High School. I live here now with my husband and my two daughters, who are also born and raised here and gone through the North Andover school system. My mother lives here, so I am a townie 100%. We all need a home: young professionals like my daughters, families with kids, empty nesters like my husband and I, seniors like my mom, workers, people with disabilities, people struggling to make ends meet. All of us need somewhere to live. Making sure that North Andover has a variety of types of places to live for all kinds of people and for all income levels is critical to maintaining a vibrant and livable community. That is who we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving to one-minute statements now, considering the lights are on, and we'll allow you to please your name and address.
Leslie Kilpinski, 19 Little Road.
Welcome.
I've lived here all my life, 54 years, and my children have gone to the schools, and I'm voting for the moratorium. I thought we needed a moratorium years ago. I think a lot of people have moved into this town that don't remember what it used to be like. When I was old enough to know what the word "population" meant, we had 17,000 people in this town. Now we have over 34,000. I think I used to ride horses in this town and swim with them in Stevens Pond because you could get there from where we were, which was ironically where Coventry Lane is right now. And I just want to say that I think when my son was in the Thompson School and he had 33 children in his class, I don't think that was ideal. And in all due respect, our lake is pronounced Kachikowick.
One-minute statements, sir.
Hi there. Michael List, 30 Leanne Drive. I am also an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and a member of the School Capacity Subcommittee. However, I'm speaking as a citizen and not a member of either board. However, in my duties on the School Building Subcommittee, I was tasked with looking at school enrollment, and so I wanted to address some of the comments specifically regarding that. Our school system has been growing at about a clip of about 35 students per year. That's 35 out of 4,500 current enrollment. And with looking at what has been proposed for various developments, we expect that it'll continue to grow at that exact same pace. It will not explode, it will not crater. However, the last few years, enrollment has gone down. But we are overcrowded. We have been overcrowded for a long time, but we are overcrowded because of the last 30 years and not because of the next 10. And one last thing, real quick, is that I grew up in a nearby town called Needham, which has not grown in the last 40 years and has become completely unaffordable.
Thank you, sir. We're done.
Yeah, thank you.
Sarah.
Stephen Hatch, Forest Street. Understrained growth is the ideology of a cancer. It never ends well. Ask Enron, ask Lehman Brothers, or ask AOL. It is very rare that bigger is better. Examples are few. Our neighboring town, Bauxford, is a less-is-more town that serves their residents and desires very well. Over the last several decades, the quality of life of our citizens has diminished with accelerated growth. It has resulted in environmental degradation, more noise, more traffic, reduced coherence of community spirit, and general unesthetic ugliness. It's time for reason and stop this unsustainable town office-generated-growth-at-any-cost agenda.
Thank you very much, sir. And I appreciate you hitting the one-minute mark.
George Kayler, 41 Quail Run Road. I'm a- I'm a trustee on the North Andover Housing Trust, but I'm here, I'm speaking for myself. This ban will stop modifications or improvements to existing multifamily housing. I believe I saw in one of the handouts that said it will stop new multifamily housing. The word "new" is not in the article. This means that if a landlord has a tree limb fall on his roof in a storm in the coming two years, or if he wants to make modifications between tenants, he can't do it. He can't get the building permit to do that. I think that's an unintended consequence of this warrant, of this article. And not, I don't think it was intended, but it's an unintended consequence, and who knows what other unintended consequences there are? So I urge people to vote against this article.
Thank you, sir.
Gregory Harris, 22 Royal Crest Drive. I've lived here about nine years, actually. And I'm speaking as a resident of the apartment complex at Royal Crest. And also, I'm voting for the moratorium, mostly to stop the rise, the bulldozing of the apartment complex currently there and the creation of high-rise luxury apartments. And the main reason is, everyone talks about affordable housing. I'm for affordable housing. I don't see the plans for the apartment complex at Royal Crest to be working on creating affordable housing. And also, it's somewhat misleading to refer to the apartment complex as Royal Crest. Royal Crest was sold to Aimco Management LLC back in 2013, I think. So the company owns apartment complexes all over the state and other parts of the country for that matter. So it's not just Royal Crest Apartments, it's actually Aimco Management LLC. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Everyone's being very good at hitting their mark. I appreciate it.
That's a lot of pressure now. Robin Morgeson, High Street. And I understand the arguments, I really do, but in, one of the speakers was giving examples of, you know, it would stop somebody from building 10 units for senior housing and 12 units for this. I live on High Street. Within a mile of me, there are over, well over 300 units that were approved in the last year that are in process, probably more than that. That doesn't, that doesn't count Royal Crest. I sat through the planning board meetings, we, many of us did, and in the end, one of the things I learned is that, per Rosemary's comment, there is a state requirement that you need to meet a minimum amount of affordable housing. Until you meet that, build away. And so even though we're at the planning board, the planning board's saying, hey, we can only do what we can do. So that's why I'm supporting the moratorium. We need to take a second look at this.
Thank you.
Sir. I have a question for Mr. Finn.
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin, Boston Hill Road. Kevin Doobie.
Thank you.
My question is with Joe Finn, if he would answer it. If you could expand on the number of multifamily units that you detailed in your speech, I would appreciate it.
If Mr. Finn wishes to answer the question, I'll allow it, but I'll limit him to a minute or the remainder of your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if I could have a minute, that would be great.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, give the gentleman a minute on the clock.
In one of the, in one of the slides by the town, it was mentioned here that they only had 32 multifamily units in the last 15 years. It's 2000 to 2015, but they really didn't. I mean, we're saying there's a healthy inventory of like 3,332 units. What happened is, the quote that they were referring to was misquoted. They forgot two words, "annual average," when referencing the sentence on page 31 in the Housing Production Plan. The statement actually reads, "Between 2000 and 2015, residential permanent activity in North Andover fluctuated with an annual increase of about five, three-to-four family units and 32 multiple units, equating to 79 and 546, not 32 multiple family units over the 15-year period." So we really have 3,332, and then we added to it. The question now becomes, if the residents had known there were 3,300 more units than what they were assumingly told, like we were today, would they have voted at town meeting for the nearly 600 slated units for completion?
Thank you, sir.
And those are market-rate units. Affordable units for the opposition is in the moratorium. I'm fighting for affordable units here because they approved 600 units for market rate.
Thank you, sir.
That's the whole purpose of this moratorium.
Thank you, sir. Is there a response? No, okay.
Stan Novak, 26 Pembroke Road. I have a couple questions before a statement, if I can.
Perhaps.
I would like to know that...
And all of it's going to be done within the next 53 seconds.
Okay. I'd like to know the number, the average number of pupils per acre from multifamily versus single-family, the average tax revenue per acre for multifamily versus single-family. In part three, they said it's going to make homes more expensive. I say, good. My house in Texas that I sold when I bought my house here, the value has grown twice as fast as the value of my home in North Andover. And finally, if 40B is so bad, let's start sending people up to Beacon Hill that will get rid of it.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to answer the gentleman's question or is capable of doing so?
Not on the air.
All right, we are not able to answer that question, apparently. Ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Leslie Clark...
You may take your mask down if you wish, but only if you wish.
Leslie Clark, 126 High Street.
Welcome.
I moved here to teach in Lawrence six years ago, and the only way I would be able to be close to the community I serve was by living at Heritage Green. I just recently purchased this home on 126 High Street, and my visceral reaction is to say, yes, a moratorium. However, there are these lack of details, such as not addressing small, three-unit family homes, and I believe that that needs to be addressed because I couldn't have been here and I couldn't have gotten the money to be in this community that I've chosen to start a family in without that affordable housing that I had when I first moved here and chose this community. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hi, Jennifer Doobie, Boston Hill Road.
Welcome.
I also have a question for Mr. Finn. He looked at the impact studies. Did they include all of the information that was presented tonight?
Thank you. Mr. Finn, you have literally 43 seconds to answer, and you'll hit the mark.
As background information, I requested the financial impact analysis for the four big projects for 600 units. I met with the planning board and told them that three out of those four units had no cost data for the schools, the fire, the police, the recreation. More importantly, there's no source documentation reflecting estimated costs of the school, police, fire, elder, library, veteran, youth services for all four projects. To date, 23 days later, I have not received any information detailing the costs of those departments listed in the article. That's the purpose of the article. They're here today. 23 days ago, I asked for that information. They said that they've done the studies.
Thank you, sir.
Then have them give me the information today. It's 23 days later.
Sir, sir, thank you very much. We have no comment from the stage? All right? I'm sorry, we're on the... Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry.
You're welcome to.
You have one minute.
Literally, all of the studies talked about by Mr. Finn have already been done. When we did the, when the Avalon project, and some people who went to the Avalon project certainly would not agree with how the result came out, but the fact that we talked about traffic over and over again, the fact that we talked about how many schoolkids would be there, for each time that they changed the plans, checked how many schoolkids that would be, and whether the school could handle that, and had the school committee and the school assistant superintendent come and say, yes, we'll be able to do this, and this is where it'll all go. All of those things were done. The fact that you weren't paying attention at that time doesn't mean that they weren't done, okay? So...
Thank you very much. I'm going to allow everybody in line to make one-minute questions or statements, and then we'll move to a vote. So I think we have you next, sir.
Hi, Max Butterbrot, 118 Brookview Drive. I'm an elected member of the North Andover Housing Authority, but I'm appearing today as a citizen to offer my perspective as a young town resident. I'm a recent graduate of law school. I'm 26, I'm fully employed, but I live in my parents' basement. It's the reality of living in this town. There's no apartments available for less than $1,600 for a one-bedroom, $2,500 for a two-bedroom, and just forget about buying a home because the prices are just crazy. But people like me, we want to come home and live and work here, but, you know, like I said, it's near impossible. We went to college, we got jobs, we worked hard, and we can't afford it. But I consider myself lucky because I can live with my parents. While the town's waiting list for affordable housing is over 5,000 applicants long, it can take 10 years. For people like me and many others, there has to be diverse options for housing. That includes multifamily and apartments. These are some of the only ways we can afford to stay in town so that we can remain close to our families and community. It's really disappointing to me as a young person that we were raised here and we can't afford to live here.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Heather McNeil, 13 Union Street.
Welcome.
I have two quick questions from outside the room from two different voters.
If they've not been brought up before?
Yes, I believe so.
Please, let's hear them.
The first question is from Karen Fwog at 517 Ria Street, and she's asking, is the language of this article legal? And if the article passes, would there be a process for revising it if it is not legal?
Okay, I'll answer that question. The motion is legal, and I can attest to that. The Attorney General will make an independent judgment as to whether the article itself as presented, if voted by two-thirds vote here, will make an independent judgment as to whether it meets the statutory requirements of state law. Now to your second question.
The second question is from Ian Burns at 26 Duffton Court, and I think someone commented on this, but I'm not sure if it's true. What would happen if a multifamily is extensively damaged, for example, by fire? And if the work was required is no longer considered renovation but considered new construction, would they be allowed to get a building permit for that?
And let's ask if somebody is able to answer that question.
Mr. Moderator.
I don't think you're on.
Mr. Moderator, if it's considered new construction, it would not be allowed. So new, new construction allowed.
Thank you very much.
My name is David Colimba, 31 Eaglewood Street. My father-in-law built the house in 1938. I've been living there for 48 years with my wife. She just passed away. Building, they put on a 114, Battleship gray, they're all at different angles. If a fire gets in there, those people are going to die if it happens in the middle of the night. They're not questioning how they're building these houses. You go down there and look at them. I've gone inside that property when they were buying and building them. They're, I wouldn't go there. I wouldn't pay that money they're paying for it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And every, every blessing on your wife's passing, sir. You're very welcome.
Hi there, Christina Dennis.
Come closer.
Christina Dennis, Johnson Street. So I keep hearing that the studies have been done. When were the studies done?
Okay, so the master plan was 2015, 2016?
2018 was completed, is what another lady here says.
Yeah, the master plan, that sounds right, 2018. Most of the studies that we're talking about were done when each of the individual projects was done. So when the Princeton property was done, when the Knights of Columbus project, when the Avalon project, during the hearings processes for those projects before the planning board, there were traffic studies done with peer review, there was lighting studies, there was, all of those were done during those projects.
I don't know that you're answering my question.
Excuse me, to me, ma'am.
Pardon me. So the studies that relate to the master plan as opposed to the individual projects.
I think the gentleman is answering that question.
The master plan was not necessarily a study. It was a report where the consultants working with the town and soliciting input got information about town priorities and history and things like that. That was finished in the 2018 or so, with the report being presented. That project took about six months to a year, I want to say, to go through with all the public comment and things like that. So I think it was published in 2018. There was a housing production study published about the same time. I don't know offhand the exact...
I'm sorry, lines cut off.
So I guess my follow-up is, we don't have any current studies of the impact of the more recent multifamily units.
I think I, excuse me. I think I heard that we did.
Well, I can answer that.
Allow, thank you.
So...
And then the town manager's going to weigh in as well.
The most specific recent one during the discussion before the planning board of Royal Crest, there was a study with how many schoolchildren have been anticipated from each of those projects that I mentioned. The traffic study incorporated all of the recent developments, also talked about the potential of the Mastiot 114 project. So this, during the Royal Crest discussion, which hasn't come to any voting or anything yet, those newer studies have been part of that.
Do we have a comment?
Yeah, just to add to that, Mr. Moderator, through you. While the master plan was finalized in 2018, there has been extensive planning done just in the 18 months that I've been here. We started and are almost finished with Facilities Master Plan 2. As you know, the school subcommittee is finishing their work. We plan to bring this next town meeting. The fiscal impact analysis for Royal Crest was finalized in May. Well, we are just starting our sewer and water capacity study that was addressed in the master plan that was finalized in 2018. We have a housing production plan that is active through 2022. This year, we finished the Municipal Vulnerability Repairness and All Hazards Mitigation Plan update. Last town meeting, we funded the Lake Watershed Plan, and we are just finalizing that. The school capacity study was finalized in April. That study was cumulative in nature. The Merrimack Valley Priority Growth Strategy was completed in the last five years as well.
Thank you very much. We're done? I'm gonna...
I still had 20 seconds.
I'm sorry?
I still had 20 seconds.
I apologize. We have four more people in line. I'm going to allow them to ask a question or make a comment, and then we're going to move forward.
Rebecca Driscoll, 56 Meadow Lane. I think we need to recognize people's concern that there is some question over the interpretation of whether this would allow for repair and renovation. Rather than have people go forward with a vote that might have unintended consequences, because I know that the people who put this article forward did not intend for people to be limited in renovating or repairing their homes or their current properties, is it possible in the process tonight to revise this, to insert the word "new" before multifamily dwellings so that it reads that shall be issued for the, no new building permits shall be issued for the construction of new multifamily dwellings?
I think we have an interpretation that already accomplishes that. And as I related earlier, the petitioners and those who are opposed were looking for a clean up or down vote.
Mr. Moderator, this is now being decided.
Excuse me, excuse me. So you are welcome to make that amendment, but I'm just explaining to you what had happened prior to this. Do you wish to make that amendment?
I would like to make that amendment.
So repeat, repeat?
So the people have, know what they're voting for.
Repeat for me exactly in the motion where you would like to make that amendment.
That no, forget that word, no building permits shall be issued for the construction of new...
And if we could, we're required, we're also, go ahead. And we're also required to have it in writing. We'll see if we can clean that up later if it's not too complicated.
Okay. So my proposal is to insert the word "new" before multifamily dwellings so that it would read, that no building permits shall be issued for the construction of new multifamily dwellings.
Okay, that's easy enough. I don't suspect we need any real conversation about that, do we? About the amendment? All right, so all those in favor of the moment to, the amendment to insert the word "new", please raise your card. This needs a majority vote, by the way. All those, you may put them down, all those opposed? The amendment clearly passes. Thank you very much.
We don't want this.
And we have just three more comments, and then we're going to move, and I think it starts here.
Vera Brookaisen, 30 Leanne Drive. I'm a member of the Commission on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, but I'm speaking here as a private citizen. I'm a clergy person, and it is my privilege and my honor to do a lot of work with the senior and elder community. And when I think about a two-year pause on new housing, including dedicated senior housing, but also... housing, but also any other kind of multi-unit housing where there's one floor, where there's an elevator, where our elders and our seniors whose bodies are changing quickly need that two years in order to be in a new unit where they can live in dignity and self-sufficiency, my heart quails at the thought of a two-year pause, because we have people in our community and all over the Merrimack Valley for whom those two years will be the difference between wonderful quality of life and a very difficult one, trapped in homes that no longer accommodate them in the way they deserve to be accommodated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hi, Betsy Cody. I live at 116-
Come closer and bring the microphone down.
Betsy Cody, 116 High Street, North Andover.
Welcome.
I own a three-family. I directly bought Avalon. My prime concern, as I've been listening to everyone say, affordability. Number one, we have nothing in law that says 10% need to be 40B. We should have been in all these previous developments. We would not be in this problem today. And what's affordability? I own a three-family. My rent's cheap, but I'm a nice landlord. I have good tenants. But I'm just saying, I'm looking at all this, and I'm like, affordability, these, I can't afford $2,000 a month, and that's what these apartments are. And none of the upcoming apartments are going to be 40B, and we're going to be screwed. And I'm saying this, and I'm talking about it, and that is the problem. It has never been addressed from day one. Everybody wants affordable, but not in my backyard.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Grace Kane, 825 Johnson Street.
Welcome.
Hi, I just have one question. If the moratorium passes, will it affect building the senior, new senior center?
Let's ask that question if somebody has the ability to answer it.
The moratorium, Mr. Moderator, in my, in the legal opinion we received from KP Law, would not affect the ability of the senior center or the Mingle Project attached to the senior center to get permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, folks, I think we're ready for the question. I'm going to ask all those in favor of the motion as amended, which added the word "new," to raise their card. It needs, it requires a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. All those, excuse me, all, we're in the midst of a vote, sir. You'll please sit down. Please, please. Sir.
Martin was moving out of town. He had to move to Idaho.
Excuse me, sir. All those in, all those against the motion, please raise your card. It, it, I, it's, I, I'm going to be prudent and ask for a count. So if all the counters would come forward, state law requires, I heard a yelled-out question, state law requires a two-thirds vote on all zoning articles. And this is a zoning article, and that's the statutory responsibility. Counters are ready? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your card. put their cards down, and when you're ready, please come to the front of the room.
Marina, Boston.
No opers, sir, or you'll be asked and accepted from the meeting. Excuse me, sir, you will be accepted from the meeting for inappropriate commentary. You'll be, sir, you'll be silent from this moment. He's okay for the moment. Again, tellers, tell your sections to put their cards down if, if you've finished the count. Thank you all for your patience. I think we're ready to hear a count. All those in favor, section one, please come up to the microphones, tellers. Please, don't be shy. We'll love you, whatever the count is. It's all right. Section one. I like the hustle.
58.
58. Section two.
49.
49. Section three.
73.
73. Section four.
89.
89? Thank you very much. Please come forward. Section five.
24, 24.
24. Section six.
17.
17. Section eight.
11.
11.
7.
Excuse me, 7. I will get my ears checked as well. Section nine.
Section seven.
8, excuse me.
Section seven.
Section seven? I thought we just had section seven. I called-
I did 8.
You did 8. So we had that incorrectly. It's my fault. Let's start all over again. Section seven.
4.
4. So we make that correction in 7. Section eight.
11.
11. Thank you very much. Section nine.
3.
3. And section 10, speak up, 2. So now, all those not in favor against the motion, please raise your card. your attention and participation in this fine evening. Special thanks to our Health Director, Brian LaGrasse, for his guidance, and the Board of Health for its support. Thank you. And I want to give particular thanks to the town clerk, her extraordinary staff, which we've mentioned before, the volunteer tellers, our North Andover Community Access Director, Brian Fraser, and his staff, our head teller and emergency management director, Jeff Coco, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jim Mealy, and as well Steve Langlois and his many colleagues on the custodial staff who helped set this all up, and the dozens of others who have helped run our second, and I hope for pandemic's sake anyway, final El Fresco meeting. Counters, are we ready? I think we are. Section one.
26.
26. Section two.
50.
50. Section three.
45.
45. Section four.
46. 46?
46. Section five.
11.
11. Section seven.
6.
Section six, sorry.
26.
26. I'll get it right. Section seven.
3.
3. Section eight.
10.
10. Section nine.
3. 3.
3. Thank you. And the final section, 19. The motion requires a two-thirds vote with 330 in the affirmative, 239 in the negative. It does not reach the 66% threshold, having 57%, 58% we'll call it, voting favorably. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now ready for a German or dissolution of the meeting. Mr. Chairman?
The motion has been made to dissolve town meeting.
I need your vote for this. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, I can't imagine, very many. I thank you very much for enjoying our meeting under the lights. Good night, all.